I'm ready to take this.
Yeah.
Which one is it?
That guy, that guy was going to farm the home. He kept him on the street.
I'm like, yeah. I should feel like, I should drive. I'm like, I'm going to change the car. There's gotta be somebody, there's gotta be somebody. Yes, absolutely. I feel like, uh, can't hold it in your hand. So, Tom Bowles. Yes. Yeah. That's a good question. I mean, what's right there? I'm just trying to think of names.
Oh, I have that, look. Great minds think alike. Great minds think alike.
Oh, mine is not. It's like a Florence.
I'm pretty good there.
No, he doesn't talk like that. He does a little congestion.
Yes. That's definitely all.
No, he doesn't.
I guess we don't get those on.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, wait. One night. Yeah. Really? Let the next department.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what I posted. Yeah. Yeah. I wish. Okay.
I think it is. Tomorrow? Six months. Three.
Hey, hey, chef, hey.
By twenty eight.
What you got there? All the way. He is. He can hold it when he walks around. Yeah. You gonna interview somebody in the crowd? Like it's jacked up.
Am I with bro?
No.
I really don't.
No.
I can lean over and talk.
That is your mic, sir.
If they were, by twenty nine.
I think it's on.
Yeah. That's why. Yeah. I'm like, okay. 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 I'm like, okay.
Yeah.
Really? Let the next department.
Yeah. That's what I posted. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I guess we don't get those on.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, wait. One night. Yeah. Really? Let the next department.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Really? Let the next department. That's what I posted.
Yeah. 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 Cause there's like that. I think it is. Tomorrow? Six months. Yeah. 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 Hey, hey, chef, hey. All right.
By twenty eight.
What happened there?
He got there. All the way. He is. He's he can hold it when he walks around. Yeah. You gonna interview somebody in the crowd?
Maybe one?
Like it's jacked up.
Am I with bro?
No.
I really don't.
No.
I can lean over and talk.
That is your mic, sir.
If they were, by twenty nine.
I think it's on.
Yeah. That's why. Yeah. I'm like, okay. I'm like, okay. I'm like, okay. Oh, you have a special, you've got the Mr.
He's special. He's fancy.
He's got the Mr. Microphone.
Fancy.
That's for the solo artist.
Any, any mic break, I can be around in a heartbeat.
Okay, are you ready? You're ready? The Chair is now going to call the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, can you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nitrano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk, I appreciate it. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we all are striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Before we move into our agenda, I know I sang in the hallway, but I wish for all of us to wish Alderman Gregory a happy birthday today.
Happy birthday! (applause)
Thank you for spending your birthday with us.
It's all right, my pleasure. Nothing you'd rather do, right?
Yes, indeed.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to move, uh, two thousand and twenty-five zero four seven to the front of the agenda for a second.
We have a motion and a second to bring two thousand and twenty-five zero four seven to the front of the agenda. Uh, this is an ordinance appointing Jeffrey G. Cox to the office of Alderman for Award One. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the item from the Alders? Alderman Hanauer, do you want to speak? No?
That was just for the motion.
All right. Any other discussion from the Alders to bring this forward? All right, so the motion was to bring it forward. All those in favor of bringing it forward now, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So, the Chair will now entertain a motion to move Agenda Item two thousand and twenty-four zero four seven from the debate agenda for action by the City Council.
So move.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the action? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair is entertaining a motion to place Agenda Item number two thousand and twenty-five zero four seven on final passage. So move.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to place two thousand and twenty-five zero four seven on final passage, any discussion from the Alders? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no, the voting is now open. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Congratulations, Mr. Cox. (applause) We're gonna pause and let Mr. Cox get sworn in.
You run out the doors that long.
He's out of office.
If you want, you move up here.
Yeah. Yeah. I, Jeffrey Cox.
I, Jeffrey Cox.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Alderman for the city of Springfield.
Of Alderman for the city of Springfield.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Take a seat. Come on up.
You want a picture before we make you sit in the seat? Do you wanna, do you wanna photo first with your family before we have you sit?
Yeah, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, back this way. Okay.
We'll get pictures.
We'll let him take a picture and then.
But take your pictures and then come on up, right? Take your pictures, come on up. There's still time to get out if you don't sign. You have to show me the progress. Yeah. 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 How we watching? How we, how we, how we? How are you? Hey. This is good. This is good. This is good. Come on up. Come on up. Yeah. Come on up. 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 Come on up.
You want a picture before we make you sit in the seat? Do you wanna, do you wanna photo first with your family before we have you sit?
Yeah, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, back this way. Okay. We'll let him take a picture and then.
But take your pictures and then come on up, right? Take your pictures, come on up. There's still time to get out if you don't sign. You have to show me the progress. Yeah. 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 So. The Murdoch's in the future. All right. Should be, all right. Thank you. All right. Do you guys want to see him signing out of office?
If he can do it up there on the podium, they can take photos of him signing as out of office if they want.
We might do it in court. Just sign right there, Jeff. There you go. All right. Thank you for all your help. Jeff, you can take a few more photos if you want, we're still waiting for the ordinance for me to sign, so you can. I think I ran a while.
If you have any more photos to, okay.
But thank you.
Alderman Cox, just remember, that's the hot seat.
Bye, Callie. Bye, Callie, love you. All right, I'll see you later. Mmm. Not tonight, Joe. Raise his chair. Have to raise his chair. Which one? The side?
It's in your office.
Like the high back. Yeah. Why so low?
Yes.
Yeah, Jeff, you can raise your chair, Chuck like the high one. He got a password. Yeah, do you have a password for it, Peter?
Uh, Joanna will get it, she had to run down to get the ordinance, she forgot it, I need to sign it before we resume the meeting. I have to make him official.
So we need to. I'm sorry? Yeah. Stand up. Stand up.
That would just be a roll call, because he doesn't, I don't know that he's in the system yet. He'll have to, he'll have to vote.
Yeah. Yeah. Almost over the coffee. It's all good. Tell you.
Would you like us to sing to you, Alderman, while we're waiting, Gregory?
Uh, no, it's all right. I heard Ralph and them sing.
He's got the special microphone, so he could start us off.
And he can walk around with it.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Mayor, excuse, Mayor, just for, uh, the record, uh, Alderman Cox has joined the meeting and.
We can't say that, cause he's not an Alderman yet, I haven't signed.
He's not an Alderman yet.
We need to wait a minute.
Here, just short.
Prime pause.
Okay. Yeah. These are all first reading. Yep, yep. So, very close. Looks like. Yeah, Jermaine, ain't marking Stewart. And then it's something like this. Yeah, I don't know why I thought I had so early. Date it, or something. I think they just wanted to see. Uh, okay. You got your hand, which I passed to him and did it right. Let's see. Step out, bring you back down to his office.
I can start with the voting.
Yeah, cause, cause he's got.
Okay, Alderman Cox, I have assigned the ordinance and the clerk has signed the ordinance to you and our official.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Alderman.
Just a matter of, of, of point of order, you're gonna be voting by voice tonight, they'll all be voting, we'll get you hooked up, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero four two for the property located at two thousand and two hundred and forty-two South Sixth Street. Petitioners are two 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 South LLC. The present zoning classification is S two Community Shopping and Office District Section one five five point zero three one. The requested zoning relief is variance of sections one five five point three zero zero C nine, prohibited signs, signs with movement, one five five point three zero two B four, five, and seven. General conditions for temporary signs, one five five point three zero two C one banners, one five five point three zero two C three and D. Special provisions for temporary signs, one five five point three two zero A, B, D, and E. Permitted accessory on-premise signs, one five five point three two two C, illuminated signs, and one five five point three two for projecting signs. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is denial, concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
I move that we continue this, uh, Agenda Item until March eighteenth.
Second.
Okay. We have, uh, motion and a second to continue until March eighteenth. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, thank you, Alderwoman. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero zero one for the property located at two thousand and one hundred and sixty-eight South Ninth Street. Petitioners are Apex Fire Sprinkler Company LLC. The present zoning classification is B one Highway Business Service District Section one five five point zero three three. The requested zoning relief is reclassification from B one Highway Business Service District Section one five five point zero three three to I one Light Industrial District Section one five five point zero four zero. In the event a reclassification is deemed inappropriate, a use variance to allow the property to be utilized as a fire sprinkler contracting office and fabrication shop as detailed in Section five of the petition. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial as submitted, but approval of a use variance to allow the property to be utilized as a fire sprinkler contracting office and fabrication shop as described in Section five of the petition and as shown on the exhibits to the petition in the B one Highway Business Service District. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for approval of a use variance to allow the property to be utilized as a fire sprinkler contracting office and fabrication shop as described in Section five of the petition and as shown on the exhibits to the petition in B one Highway Business Service District. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, staff recommendation for use variance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation for use variance, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And Alderman Cox, how do you vote?
Uh, yes, aye.
Okay, so the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. And this concludes the zoning portion of our meeting, so thank you to all that are here for zoning. The Chair will now recognize Treasurer Redpath Fager for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of January. The beginning balance is forty-eight million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand and seventeen dollars.
Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will now entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading this evening, Agenda Item 2025-063. An ordinance accepting an agreement with Birch Creek Development LLC for the purchase of all MISO Zone 4 capacity from a solar energy installation for three years in an amount not to exceed $8,300,250 for the Office of Public Utilities.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Rockford.
Yes, Doug, is Doug here?
I hope so.
Is there anybody?
No.
Blaine Wood.
Corporation Counsel, can you speak to this, since we don't have anyone from CWP?
Okay, yeah, we got time.
Yeah, it's on first read, but he can, yeah.
Yeah, so this is on first read. This is part of diversifying our portfolio. It would be a three-year agreement to purchase solar power to utilize that under an energy purchase agreement. The agreement, the number came in late Thursday night after the filing deadline for first read, which is why we're placing it, why we're asking for it to be placed on first read today.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it'll be up for discussion at your committee, the whole meeting next week.
Right, thank you.
Yes, Alderman Williams, do you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, so it was exempt from bidding. Is there any reason why? Or do you want to wait and answer that next week?
I would, I would wait to discuss that next week on.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion on the first read? And the item again will be up for discussion next week at the committee of the whole meeting. So the voting, we'll just do a roll call vote for yeses and nos on this just to make sure that we've got the votes to put it on first reading. Clark Redpath, can you please do that?
Alderman Cox.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Nutrano.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
And I vote aye as well, so 11-0, it goes on first reading. So the motion carries to put it on first reading, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Alderman Williams, do you have a question, or is that old?
Oh, that's old.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no. And Alderman Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And the motion carries with 10 voting yes, none voting no. There are no agenda items remated tabled during committee, so we do not need to discuss that. The next item on the agenda is Item 2025-063. An ordinance authorizing $500,000 utilizing Far East Tax Increment Finance Funds for infrastructure improvements throughout the Far East Tiff District to allow for construction of 50 new affordable single-family homes pursuant to the Nehemiah Homes Redevelopment Project for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Item Number 2025-063 on final passage.
So move.
So we have a motion and a second to put on final passage. Any discussion from the council? All right, seeing none, the voting will now be open. Oh, wait, sorry, I apologize. Mr. Pasha, do you wish to use your five minutes now or at the end of the meeting? Because you did write Nehemiah Homes on your document, so I just wanted to ask. Okay, thank you, sir, absolutely. So the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Alderman Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is Item Number 2025-064. An ordinance authorizing a sub-recipient grant agreement with NEMI Expansion Incorporated for development of 50 new affordable single-family homes utilizing home investment funds in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Item Number 2025-063 on final passage.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And Alderman Cox?
Yes.
So the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no, so we're good. Thank you, Mr. Neaus and Mr. Reverend Johnson for being here. Is there any unfinished business from the council? Oh, Reverend Johnson, yes, sir.
Again, you know, you give a preacher podium, gotta take my opportunity. To the mayor and to Alderman and Alderman Gregory, thank you for your support. Thank you for the confidence in us as we work out the agreement to make sure that 50 new affordable housing will hopefully begin this fall. That's how I intend, right?
No, next, spring of '26.
Okay. One of them days.
I'll get, I'm hurrying, I'm hurrying.
So, so, so we thank you, we appreciate it. We're looking forward to working with the city and the city working with us and with the PLA. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. And then Alderman Gregory has something he'd like to say to you, I think.
No, no.
The birthday boy.
I just want to say thank you and thank Mr. Neaus for, and just everybody who's been a part of this. The mayor, my colleagues who's been listening to me, Jen. You know, I've talked to Ralph Rock, you know, pretty much everybody has contacted me because they did have interest on making sure that this worked out. You know, as well as our labor leaders and everybody just sitting down and working through a tough process and understanding. So I appreciate the work that you do. I look forward to seeing people from our community working on a project and locally. And we're gonna, we're gonna keep getting after it. We got, you know, after this 50, I'm gonna be trying to hog down 50 more, so I appreciate you. That's our plan. You got a good birthday present. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Reverend.
I was praying.
We're gonna get him out of here so he can celebrate, hopefully. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council from the council members? Seeing none, is there any new business to come from the council? Alderman Gregory?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, thought we were gonna, you're gonna have a sing yet.
We get, we get new computers hopefully.
They're on order. All right, so seeing, we have no new business then, all right. So we will go to citizens who have signed up to speak. Let me get my folder here. So the first person who has signed up to speak is Brianna Eilers. Is Brianna Eilers here? Brianna Eilers. That would be a no. Okay, we're gonna move on if not here. The next person signing up to speak is James Johnson.
Mr. Cox, right?
Yep.
Don't get to know him. He's ain't got no patrons here, oh.
Black History Year. Black history is American history. Today, we're gonna talk about SPD. Unsolved murders and homicides in our city as far back as I can remember. To all the families that are living with this, I haven't forgot. Mr. Ewing ax murders on South Grand. The woman found in the crawl space on South Grand, we haven't forgot. To my boy Fresh and Keisha, we haven't forgot. To the double homicide, Womack and Wright. To my boy Neon. To the fame woman found on the highway ramp, sad, we haven't forgot. Levin Street teenagers, the 13th and Cornell. The execution out, out on the west side of town at Wendy's. The black males who was breaking into them job boxes at Lanfair and came up with one in the head, suspicious. Sad. I'm sure I didn't get everybody. And I'm sure I let some people out. And I'm sorry if I missed anyone. Please get a hold of me because your family member's not gonna be forgotten either. And we're not gonna let this happen. So please, let me know. So we have killers among us. Don't look around because it might be one in the room. Who knows? So to the police chief, stop talking on the media about all the guns that we pulled off the street. Let's talk about how many of these unsolved murders we have solved. Just in my time of speaking, guns have been delivered somewhere in town. But we want to talk about all the weapons that we got off the streets. I always like to come bring a message. And I want our police department, Mayor, we ain't got the money, they ain't got their money. These families deserve some closings. Now granted, you wouldn't hear when all this happened, some of these, and some of these you were. Our chief, he wasn't here when some of these happened, but he's here now. And I'm gonna speak up for a lot of these families right now. Their loved ones shall not and cannot be forgotten. And Sean, they just found a guy dead it, and we gotta find out and stay on top of that. So that's all I'm gonna say today. And I hope this community and us and we all can work together. And there's some around this horse shooter like to give kudos to our police department all the time. And that's fine. But I just gave you a list of families that are still suffering because they loved ones haven't got justice. They deserve justice. Because if it was your family or if it was one of those cops, they'll be on a manhunt until they found that person. And we want our people in our community to be treated the same way when there's a death or when there's a homicide or a murder. Find the victim, find the perpetrator, lock them up. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Zach Long.
He's not here.
Not here? The next person signed up to speak is Caitlin Keen. Caitlin Keen? The next person signed up to speak is Viata Keen. Assuming that they're together maybe. Viata Keen, okay. The next person signed up to speak is Kaylee Freeman.
I'm also gonna be talking about these supposedly overworked police. Sonia Massey should be alive. I don't know where the people on this council have been. The next commission meeting is March 10th. I'm sure some of you have been. I watched some of them online, but it's really important that you guys are there, especially the mayor. Please don't act like this just happened in Woodside and you all have no responsibility. Let's not forget that y'all's bestie Frank Valli sat on that board before he was appointed to the airport. These holes in service around Springfield are killing people. Springfield, Illinois's inability to face its racist past with accountability and a mission to do better is killing people. We have put a Lincoln sticker on a massacre. Racist ambulance staff and cops kill our residents. And it's not just about race, but about disability and substance use as well. The police should be the last option for mental health calls. And in some cities, they are. They do not go on these calls. The cops say they are busy. Let's have them stop responding to nonviolent emergencies. They are obviously not prepared and have a lot of bias they need to work on. Our police are busy responding to things that could be handled by nurses, social workers, or trained peer support workers. Instead, this city pays for the police to go to DC and to Florida. While Proud Boys hide in our ranks. Aaron Nichols, this was not that long ago, guys, let's stay on the Zoom, was on our force for 18 years and loved to hate us. By us, I mean Jewish people, black people, LGBTQ, et cetera. He was a neo-Nazi. He was hate personified. There was only one person fired in that case, and that was Aaron, and he resigned. Incidents like that do not occur in a vacuum. Policing was founded on the capture of slaves. Chief Scarlett, do your officers know their history? The history of hate that they continue to perpetrate in this community? We implore you to show up for the community you claim to serve. You sit up here, you all don't make near enough for what we ask you to do. I'm not saying you do. But what I'm saying is you ran, you're in these positions. Show up to these community meetings. The next commission meeting is March 10th. You all have a culture of hate and corruption. We are begging you to show up and do better.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Ken Pasha.
Thank you, sir. I'm starting to, oh, wow, that one was worse than usual. My apologies, guys. So I feel like I'm kind of a broken record again. The massage parlors, they're still open. Some of them are operating with tags on their doors that you guys closed them. Why are the police not responding to the complaints that they're violating that? Who is enforcing that? Why are these places still operating? Why is there still footage of Johns going in and out the doors? I mean, does the ordinance have teeth or not? Can we shut these places down or not? That's not a personal affront to you, Corporation Counsel, but it's starting to get a little frustrating that like at this point, I mean, why don't we just bar the doors, chain the doors? I mean, legitimately though, they're operating against all known guidelines in regards to the ordinance that you guys have enacted and the work that you've put in to get them shut down. It seems wild that they're just openly defying that in this city. If I started openly defying laws, I think we all know what would happen, right? Why are they being able to flout that openly in front of everybody as though that doesn't apply to them? And they're still continuing to allow women to be raped on a daily basis while that city sticker sits there like an empty, meaningless thing? That seems, that frustrates me, so it's gotta frustrate you guys to know that your enforcement and your ordinance doesn't scare them. Doesn't slow their roll a bit. They keep bringing in more women in other locations such as the closed Golden Relaxing Spot over there on South Grand. We've literally got footage of them bringing in women individually. And then that same madam has been spotted at other places going and taking them to other massage parlors. We've forwarded all that to the police. I've just, I have to question what more needs to be done to get these places shut down. Because quite frankly, you're gonna keep running into vigilante type work. Like if any of you ever visit 217 Problems, a young man went there with an undercover camera and carried it to fruition. It's pretty disgusting, to be perfectly honest, that somebody put a 19-year-old child up to that to rape a woman on film in desperation to do something about this problem, to call attention to it, to bring more eyeballs to it. Because they are tired of seeing this happen. And I might be the loudest advocate for it, but I assure you that there is a large group of people out there that are dedicated to bringing this to everyone's attention. And the more that this goes on unabated, despite the city's best efforts, I would start looking for new solutions. I don't know what to tell you guys. Bar the doors, block them, start arresting people and make, I mean, I don't know. But at this point, I can't be the only one who's trying to cook up these solutions, I'm sure. So I mean, what can be done about that? I don't expect a response right now, but I think the city should be a lot more transparent with the public about that because there's no feedback. We have articles that say they're closed and then articles that come out days later literally saying they're still open. And the city issues nothing to counter that. It makes it seem ineffective and almost kind of like a joke, to be honest. And that's not to say your work is a joke. But the outcome of it isn't leading to any real closures if they're not gonna follow it. I'm gonna follow up on the idea of the same kind of vein about sexual assault within this city. A friend of mine recently called the SPD to report being sexually assaulted by a coworker. The two gentlemen that responded were a lot less than friendly. Asked her if she'd done anything to encourage it. And when looked at the text messages being her and the person she was accusing, said, "Well, it kind of seems like you invited her to do it." That's the feedback from the police officers that came, came to help a woman who was looking to file a case of sexual assault. I encouraged her to call back a second time and have a woman officer brought out because it seemed like those two gentlemen weren't versed in victim advocacy or concerned for somebody who may have been assaulted in this city, which was pretty, pretty frustrating. And I think the really frustrating part is despite that officer being on duty at 4:30, when I walked into council, that officer had still not reached out or contacted her or followed up. That should concern all of you. Because I shouldn't have to reach out to Scarlett myself for that to be the kind of thing that should have to trickle down if our on-the-street officers are making women feel unwelcome to file sexual assault calls to the officers that'll be responding. It does seem like if somebody is doing that, because I'll note she said not to respond to non-emergency calls. That's not an emergency, but at the very least, if it's a sexual assault case, rape, or anything like that, somebody who's at the very least had some level of training in victim advocacy or how to treat someone who's been sexually assaulted specifically on a police force that is viewed fearfully both by women and minorities in this city, that should frustrate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is Robert Frazier. Is Mr. Frazier still here? Saw him.
Veda and Caitlin are here, Mayor.
Pardon me?
Veda and Caitlin walked in.
Oh, okay. Let me make sure Robert Frazier isn't here. Is Mr. Frazier in the hallway? Chief Candy's looking. Oh, Chief? Okay, it does sound like that Caitlin and Veda are here. Would you like to come up? Caitlin and Chief of Staff Disco, do you want to come up with Caitlin? You have something for her. The Chief of Staff is meeting you up there to present something to you. Joanna can help pass those around. Go ahead. The Chief of Staff is giving Caitlin a proclamation that I think she's gonna carry forward. It's not necessarily for you, correct?
Thank you.
But.
Okay, this proclamation from the City of Springfield. Whereas with the support of the City of Springfield leadership, each February is recognized and observed as National Cancer Prevention Month. And whereas the City of Springfield acknowledges the cancer disparities faced by Springfield residents and is committed to addressing these inequities. And whereas the City of Springfield supports local policies that support the reduction of cancer disparities through initiatives such as environmental health improvements, equitable access to high-quality healthcare, and the protection of all citizens. And whereas the City of Springfield supports and encourages the community, including City of Springfield employees to get cancer screenings for early detection, which is crucial in improving treatment outcomes, increasing survival rates and reducing the burden of cancer on individuals and families. And whereas the City of Springfield further recognizes the importance of raising awareness for National HPV Awareness Month in January, National Cholectomy Cancer Awareness Month in March, National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in September, Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October, and Lung Cancer Awareness Month in November. Therefore, Mayor, Mr. Misty Buscher, Mayor of Springfield, of Springfield, Illinois, together with the City Council, do hereby proclaim this month of February is Cancer Prevention Month.
Caitlin's gonna carry that to the powers that be for us at the Cancer Society. And then I think you're gonna speak to us as well.
Yes, I really appreciate it. So my name is Caitlin Keen and I work as an Associate Director of Cancer Center Partnerships with the American Cancer Society and just want to thank Mayor Misty Buscher and the City of Council for acknowledging this very important, you know, kind of acknowledgement of the real situation and quite frankly, health crisis we're seeing in central Illinois when it comes to cancer and the disparities faced in various communities. So congratulations in your packets. I do just want to share, you know, and bring attention to what all of this essentially means on the ground. So with it being National Cancer Prevention Month, it's a chance for us to really, you know, acknowledge the most recent facts and figures report put out by the American Cancer Society and what that means for our own communities. And so I had a whole thing I was gonna share here. What this could mean in our community is what we heard, read in the proclamation, but essentially just taking a chance to connect with the people that you care about, remind them of their screenings, you know, be a model and a best practice for what it means to prevent cancer and direct folks to resources and tools available when they're facing treatment. But quite frankly, when we look at the statistics, cancer is affecting all of us. And so, you know, thank you for your support and really just getting down to how we shoot for survivorship for everybody and, and what that means in terms of how you approach your everyday decisions. So I put together a packet, which you can see, you know, very stark evidence that here in central Illinois, we do have disparities. And what I would love to do is thank you to Alderwoman Purchase for inviting me into her Neighborhood Association meetings, just to build community, talk about what we're seeing and, you know, simple steps that every one of us can take for starters. And then if you have an employee base, consider letting myself or one of our volunteers come in and share the same kind of information, just to encourage your own teams to get screened. And then in the treatment space, you know, making sure that folks, like I said, are aware of programs and resources available locally. And then also how to get involved. So there's a number of ways to take action. And I also lead our Illinois Lung Cancer Roundtable. And the reason there were a lot of words in that last whereas is because each different disease type requires unique resources. And so I have the absolute pleasure of leading our state's Lung Cancer Roundtable, which unfortunately takes more people than all the other cancers combined. And so again, when we bring that back to what we can do in Springfield, there's a lot. And I like to start building that, you know, ongoing community with the people that we serve. So thank you, congratulations. Thank you for inviting me in to talk with the team at the City of Springfield. And if anybody wants to kind of take the same approach with your own networks, just feel free to reach out.
Just one minute, I think Alderwoman Conley wants to say something, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
No, I just, I want to say thank you. I appreciate you coming in and all the information that you brought. I think one of the most important slides that you gave to us, and I just want to share this with everyone, is the screening.
Yes.
Screening saves lives and money. And, and I know a lot of people, you know, get a little stressed about doing those screenings, but it really, the importance, and we see this a lot, but that, that message can't be underemphasized, that getting that early, those early tests, and some of them are a little low-key. I know some people, when they get over of a certain age, I'm not talking to Alderman Gregory or anything.
He's not there yet.
No, but I mean, and I'm throwing myself into this boat too. We get a longer list of things that we need to get screened for. But, but it really is important. I, I know, I have, I've seen people who got tested just sort of, you know, because the doctor said to, and caught things before they became much more devastating. And as you point out, much more expensive. But there's also that human loss in there too. So thank you, thank you for coming and thank you for speaking on this.
Thank you, thanks for waiting for us.
And it is Black History Month, and I know you shared a slide with me that we shared to some staff. If you could touch on that real quick.
Absolutely. So Voices of Black Women, which, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, ma'am.
Happy Black History Month. Is a really special movement and first of its kind nationwide. And so as you can see. And so as you can see, um, like I mentioned, you know, in certain communities, there's very stark disparities. Unfortunately, our black women, um, have a forty percent more likelihood of dying of breast cancer than a white woman their same age. And so quite frankly, it's unacceptable and there are reasons that we can point out. Um, but this movement that we have called Voices of Black Women, which again is nationwide, it's a huge deal, um, is, is the opportunity for black women to be a, you know, the voice of that change and take ownership in, um, you know, breaking down the barriers and really being able to understand what's happening at the community level. And so we're working with partners all over, um, the country now, it just expanded, which I'm really grateful for, to all fifty states, to recruit a hundred thousand black women to complete questionnaires, um, every six months for about thirty years, um, to really begin to, um, you know, like I mentioned, break down, um, the data and find out, uh, how we can intervene at that specific population level, starting now. So, um, it's really exciting and, um, I have, you know, a whole spiel that I could, I could talk about Voices all day because it's so important to me and I love it. Um, and so if there's any way to bring that into those conversations with your communities, I would love to and we can talk more offline about like, um, you know, specific needs for your own ward, so.
Can you tell listeners that might be listening, um, how they can sign up to be a part of that?
Absolutely. So if you go to American Cancer Society's website, cancer.org is how, um, you find American Cancer's website and from there, Voices is voices.cancer.org. And again, we're recruiting women, um, between the ages of twenty-five and fifty-five who wanna join us in this amazing movement.
And we've had some great team members of the city already sign up.
Awesome. Oh, that's exciting. Thank you and kudos to them. I'm excited to chat more about it.
Daughter wanna come up?
Yeah, so, um, you know, thank you, switching gears a little bit, um, for being patient with us and, and getting here. Um, our amazing best drivers are doubled up today. So, um, my daughter is here because she has been attending city council with me for the last couple of months and hearing all that's happening around human trafficking. And she actually chose, um, this topic to write a recent paper on and she wanted to share it with you. So if you wanna come up and read it.
This is Veda who signed up to speak.
That's my daughter.
So Joanna, this is Veda.
Thank you for waiting for us.
Absolutely.
Hi, everyone. My name is Veda. I'm fourteen years old and in eighth grade. Today I'll be reading an essay I wrote on why I think human trafficking needs to be How would you feel if you were taken from your family and loved ones and sold like a piece of property? I know I wouldn't and I assume many others wouldn't either. This is why human trafficking must be stopped. It is horrible for the victims and anyone who takes no, negative effects from it. The first reason human trafficking should be stopped is because oftentimes it is very difficult for victims to speak up for themselves. This can be the case because of language barriers, fear of their traffickers, and fear of law enforcement. All of these worries are reasonable for their situation because of the power that is held over them. I have spoken to a human trafficking victim myself and although she was trying to be convincing that she was safe, it was clear that was not true. She was just ending her shift at the unlicensed massage parlor she works at where illegal and appropriate acts are performed by the masseuses. As my mom and I had a conversation with her, we asked if she wanted to leave. She said, no, thank you, and insisted that she would get home safe. We told her goodnight and she went on to get into the car of one of her clients who sped off and could have taken her anywhere, putting her into danger. Another reason human trafficking needs to be stopped is because it is so easy for it to happen and it can happen very quickly. All it takes is one wrong person to decide that you would be a good person for them to traffic. Experts say that traffickers look for psychological or emotional vulnerability, economic hardship, lack of a social safety net, et cetera. Many of these traits can be found in children, which is why many victims are children and young adults. Many people think that human trafficking does not happen in our community because there isn't any proof of illegal activity, which is far from the truth. This is not true because human trafficking profits billions off of the victims every year. In conclusion, it is very possible to stop human trafficking, but you have to want to. One way you can help this is by reporting any suspicious activity and be thankful you are in a position able to help instead of being in the position of needing help. Also, I think that you should support the proclamation that my mom worked on once the draft is ready for review. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
[applause]
Do we have any reason to go to executive session?
Uh, there's no need.
No need for executive session? All right. We have a motion? Do we have a second? Happy birthday. All those in favor of the Alderman celebrating his birthday now, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.